Call this meeting to order. Today's October 24th, 2017. This is a regular business meeting for our school district. And at this time, we'll have the presentation, The Colors by the Vierbeach High School Air Force Junior ROTC detachment 0043, under the direction of Wade Dues, Chief Master Sergeant, retired, and aerospace instructor.
She said get on your feet.
Present arms.
To the right of the United States of America and to their body for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order arms. Post arms. Board, march.
First order of business will be to have the adoption of the orders of the day. Would anyone like anything moved from the consent to action? Hearing none, I need a motion.
Second.
Second. In discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Presentation, Dr. Del.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're very fortunate tonight. We have three or four or more things to celebrate. One of the things that we want to do is honor our recently named Principal of the Year and Assistant Principal of the Year. We also want to honor one of our business partners, our community organizations, United Way, want to present them with a check actually. But we also want to celebrate a birthday of sorts. We have celebrated birthdays here in the past, but one of our schools is celebrating a birthday this year, 25 years of Osceola Magnet Elementary School. So we're going to have a presentation from our students today. So we have a lot to celebrate and a lot of things to share. The first thing that we'd like to do, Mr. Chair, if you could join me over at the podium, is we want to honor our recently appointed, named Principal of the Year and Assistant Principal of the Year. So we're actually going to start with the video. So we'll have the video go first, if we can have that, while Mr. Sears and I make our way over to the podium.
[Music]
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 This morning, not only did my staff, but this district surprised me with Principal of the Year for Indian River County. It is completely overwhelming. You work as a principal for years, and your job is to take care of students. And that's our focus, and that's what I think of, and that's what I care for, and that's what I fight for every day. You don't think of being recognized for those things because it is our job, and I think I can speak for most principals, it is our passion to be able to represent Indian River County, which is a fabulous county that is really child-centered. To be able to represent this county and represent the student population that I have, I am completely honored. But again, it is not something that I do. It is my teachers, my teacher assistants, behavior techs, my support staff, custodial, behavior intervention. It is all of those folks that make this happen. So a principal has vision. We hope to be able to carry that out, but all the vision in the world cannot happen or come to fruition without a phenomenal staff. Our school is not well-known. It's not well-known in the county, and not a lot of people know exactly just how hard my staff and works to make our students progress and learn. When I hear from them, because I'm constantly telling them how awesome they are, but when I went around this room and I got hugs, and people, you know, said what they said about it's deserving, and, you know, you're the best at what you do, it's great to hear, a little difficult to hear, because I'm not in that role. I'm in the role to making sure they know how wonderful they are. So it was completely overwhelming. It's emotional, and I get emotional, but I think as I reflect, I will be completely grateful that my own staff thinks that it was a well-deserved honor.
I'd like to thank my friends and family for always supporting in me. To do what I do every day takes a lot of work, and to make a difference, it takes a lot of time, so I want to thank them for affording me the time to be here and commit to helping our students grow. I'd really like to thank our district leaders, and my principal, and any of the coaches that have been involved with helping me grow into the instructional leader that I am today. I'd like to thank the parents for letting me work with your students. It's a great, great honor to work with them every day. I'd like to thank our teachers for letting me work with them and our students. To see our teachers grow every day, to see our students grow because of what our teachers are doing, is really, it's an honor. So I'd like to thank everyone who has been involved with me, past and present, who has helped shape me into the leader that I am, and the leader that I will continue to strive to be. My favorite part about Rosewood Magnet is watching the students every day, and to see the interactions between the teachers and the students, and to see the community that we've built here. We're very consistent here, and we love being a Rosewood family. We have that Panther pride. We're always positive, and so just to see the interactions with the teachers and the students, and to see the students growing, they're growing socially, they're growing emotionally, they're growing academically, and to see them go on and do great things, and then come back and see us as alumni. We have our alumni walk every year, to see them come back and say, hey, this is where I'm going, and this is where I'm headed, and to know that I'm a part of that, and seeing them grow into amazing citizens, that's really what I love about being at Rosewood, is because we're so positive, and we're always looking at how do we help our students be successful.
Okay, so you saw them both on video. I want to give you a little bit of background on the video. We wanted to make the announcements at the schools, where these people work, where they're invested. We wanted to make the announcement with them or to them in front of their most cherished possessions, the people that they work with every day. So we made the announcements at the schools. We did it kind of like in a publisher's clearinghouse prize patrol. It was a surprise. We had balloons and all that kind of thing. We did tip off the staffs ahead of time, so I don't know if you could tell, but at the Wabashoe School, they had all the students and staff in the cafeteria hiding, and we called the principal down and told her there was an emergency in the cafeteria. She came rushing down, and it was a surprise instead. Similar event at Rosewood Magnet. The principal, Cassie Flores, had Jennifer in a meeting in the office while the school assembled out on the hard court. They were tipped off, they knew what was going on. So a great way to notify them of their selection as Principal of the Year and Assistant Principal of the Year, but also to celebrate that honor with the people they work with every day. So that's kind of why we did that the way that we did. So it kind of takes away from what we're doing tonight, but we do want to call each of them up here in just a minute to formally recognize them here at a board meeting and that kind of thing. So the first is the Principal of the Year. I'll call her up here in just a second. Catherine Perrin Dozy has been at the Wabashoe School for a little over two years. She has completely transformed that school. It is a school for our students with special needs, but she does not treat them like they have any kind of disability whatsoever. She sets extremely high expectations for them, and then provides them with a loving, nurturing, and demanding environment, and helps them reach their full potential. Her staff is incredible. The things that she has done at that school truly have been transformational. She has really worked with some community partners to bring resources into that school and make it something that we should all be proud of. That little school on US-1 up there towards Sebastian is amazing and is doing amazing things. So I want to congratulate our Principal of the Year, Catherine Perrin Dozy. Come on up.
Our board chairman, Sears, he said that I needed to see, he needed to see some tears. Well, that's pretty easy coming from me. I, to our board chair, our school board members, our superintendent and senior leadership, and all of our guests, first of all, I have to say thank you for the honor. It is a tremendous honor. Anytime in someone's career that you get recognized for what we do every day, that we just think is the grind, it's truly a surprise, but it's truly an honor. Most of all, and you guys know this, is I can have all the thoughts and dreams and ideals, ideas in the world, but nothing happens without a strong team. And within this last couple of years, I have built one strong, phenomenal team, and they are all back there. Some could not make it, but I want to say thank you to all of you guys. Our logo, our district logo with the homeschool and community, and when I think of the school, I think of the entire school district for this piece, not only with us. So this is a district where, it's not this way in every district, and I will tell you that this district says it, that they believe in educating all children, and the support that we get at Wabashoe School, and that comes from, yes, our senior leadership and our school board, but every district office, our facilities guys and our plant ops guys, those guys who have come out, every one of them, to help us make these wonderful programs happen. I say thank you to all of you guys, and everybody who does that, finance, building department, just everyone, thank you. [Applause] And very quickly, the community. We have many partnerships too, that have been phenomenal in building learning opportunities for our students, and that is the Johns Island Foundation and Ed Foundation through Cynthia Filardo. Those folks have made some critical learning, opened up broad learning opportunities for our students. And so if you ever see them, thank them for us and with us, and thank you from all of our children. Thank you very much.
Another round of applause for Miss Perrin Dozy. Now, our Assistant Principal of the Year, Jennifer Norris, who you just saw on the video a few moments ago, is truly an instructional leader there at Rosewood Magnet Elementary School. She is in the trenches with the teachers all the time, helping them improve their practice. I've been to numerous trainings on Saturdays where teachers at Rosewood have given up their time to attend training, only to see Jennifer and Cassie there as well. So not only is she, you know, helping her teachers improve their craft during the week, she's even given up her Saturdays to spend time with them as well. She's truly dedicated to her job and the students at Rosewood. Some of you may not know that a couple of years ago, the principal at Rosewood Magnet Elementary School retired in the middle of the year, and Jennifer assumed the role as acting principal for the remainder of that year, and she did a fantastic job. But she wanted to remain as an assistant principal for a few more years because she has young children. Understand that, value that, I think that's fantastic. So we just know that she is doing a fantastic job in the role that she's in. She's part of that, you saw it on the video, they were all so excited for her. She's one of us, grew up here and everything in our system, so it's really with great pleasure that we honor Jennifer Norris as our Assistant Principal of the Year.
Wow, what an honor, and I have a hard time accepting honors, and so this is, you know, I was surprised when I was called out to the hard court that day. I thought I was going out there to help a student. And I got out there, and it was just, I was blown away by my staff and students to see their love, and I couldn't do what I do without them. It's because of them that I am able to do what I do every day. You know, they are really the driving force behind all of our students, making that difference every day, and I am truly honored to be able to represent our district at the state level. This is mind-blowing still, but it's truly an honor and one that I cannot express enough. So I think Perrin Dozy said it the best. We really can't do it without all of our staff. And I did try to sneak this board meeting by our staff until Mrs. Flores announced this afternoon that I was going to be receiving this honor, so I tried to sneak it by them, but thank you. Thank you for trusting in me to represent our district, and I look forward to continuing to grow as an instructional leader and making that move when it's, when it's time. So thank you.
One more round of applause for Jennifer.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see so many people here tonight. So every month, our district participates in Casual for a Cause. In exchange for addressing casually students, teachers, employees, we make a donation toward an organization that we have chosen for the month. Last month, the organization was United Way. Tonight, we have Tracy Siegel and Bill Penny here to accept the check from the school district of Indian River County for $4,103 that our employees, students, and teachers raised last month for United Way.
Bill just said it best. That was a real tough act to follow, and this pales in comparison to the great honor of Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year before us. But thank you, school board members and all of the school district for the contributions that you made for Casual for a Cause in the month of September. The money that is raised during that dress-down day actually rolls up into the workplace campaign that the school district runs for us each year. And it's amazing to give the children in the district the opportunity to learn more about different causes that are out there, and to be able to give philanthropically at such a young age, when you think that these are five-year-olds, all the ways up, all the way up through seniors in high school that are doing this. It's really outstanding. I also just want to give a brief thank you. I think there's a video about Day of Caring that's going to come up, but our Day of Caring at United Way just took place a couple of weeks ago, and the school district represented in such an outstanding way, we still all in our office have goosebumps looking at how all of the students came out that day. We had about 100 kids at the flick putting together 1,000 homeless care kits that are currently being distributed to homeless individuals here in our community. We had every single elementary school with a project, and it was just great. It was great to see those little faces out there in their Live United shirts, giving back to the community that they live in. So thank you for everything. I'm going to turn it over to Bill Penny, who is one of our campaign co-chairs for our annual campaign this year. I'm sure he wants to express his thanks as well.
Yes, thank you, Tracy. On behalf of the many dozens of United Way agencies and thousands of people that the agencies touch every day, thank you, thank you, thank you. And Mark, it was great to be, see you on Day of, our Day of Caring, leading the charge. I can see your military background when, when it was, yeah. And we do have a special check processing machine at the Marine Bank to process big checks.
So for a special performance tonight, we have Osceola Magnet School with us. The Osceola Explorer Ensemble, consisting of 4th and 5th graders at Osceola Magnet School, will be performing, and this is extra special because on Monday, they celebrated their 25th anniversary. Some of us, we were able to attend the performance at the school, and all of the students prepared a choral reading that we got to listen to. It was absolutely beautiful, very articulate, very well rehearsed, and I expect nothing less from these performers here tonight. So thank you, Osceola, for being with us tonight. Everyone enjoy the performance.
Osceola is celebrating year 25. Keeping our magnet school vibrant alive. Academic excellence in science and math. Literacy and arts goes on the right path. [Music] 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 [Music]
[Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music]
I'd have your attention. For the last presentation, we actually have another video clip about our incredible Day of Caring.
United Way's annual Day of Caring is the largest one-day, community-wide volunteer event in our community. The 2017 Day of Caring took place on Saturday, October 14th. This year, the annual Day of Caring connected a record number of volunteers, more than 1,000, with local nonprofit organizations serving Indian River County, from Fort Pierce to Gifford, helping complete much-needed projects. The school district of Indian River County hosted the Day of Caring kickoff breakfast at the Freshman Learning Center, where volunteers from around the community gathered before dispersing to their individual service projects. Each school in our district completed projects on various campuses, ranging from landscaping and cleaning, to creating artwork and writing notes to first responders. Middle and high school students remained at the Freshman Learning Center to assemble homeless care kits that will be distributed throughout the community by police and sheriff departments in Indian River County.
The United Way is such an amazing community partner, and they support so many different community partners that serve, help us to serve our students every day. community partners that serve, help us to serve our students every day. So this is the way that the school district can give back to our community. We invited community members onto all of our different campuses to help with projects. We're teaching our students that it's important to give back to their community, because part of our goal is to educate and inspire students to be concerned and creative thinkers in our world to make a difference. Thank you to the United Way for allowing us to be part of the Day of Caring today. We had middle school principals, high school principals, staff from curriculum, IT, all of the different departments in our school districts. So, this is just such a nice way for all of us to come together, to find a way to give back, and make Indian River County a better place to learn and grow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's the last of the presentations.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is citizen input.
Good evening. In our 2015 collective bargaining agreement, it was changed. Article 191B, "Teachers who retire from the school district of Indian River County or from any other Florida school district may be rehired after six months post-retirement in accordance with FRS regulations, and be given up to 10 years of experience credit, one-year credit for each year of satisfactory teaching performance, for initial step placement on the salary schedule." This language was removed at the request of the district, partially because the section about returning six months after was contrary to statute, to the statute changed requiring retirees to sit out for a full year. But in addition to this concern was the district's desire to recruit and retain high-quality teachers. Why shouldn't teachers be eligible for all their years of experience? This language was easily agreed upon, but there exists one problem. It only applies to those hired after 2015, in 2015 and beyond. In 2014, Martha Rubio, a reading teacher at Vera Beach High School, was rehired. Mrs. Rubio has taught for more than 30 years, the majority of these have been right here in Indian River County. She has earned evaluations with the highest scores, both highly effective and exemplary. She has been identified by the state of Florida as a high-impact teacher, and I quote from the district's own press release. Dr. Rendell Superintendent said, "We cannot thank these teachers enough for their hard work and dedication. They are exemplary educators, and we are very fortunate to have them in our classrooms. Our students are better every day because of them." Unfortunately for Mrs. Rubio, since she was rehired one year prior to the change in language, in 2014, she was placed at 10 years' experience, making significantly less than any teacher hired in 2015 and beyond with the same experience. In the past, when there have been disputes about the shifts in initial placement schedule, allowing newly hired teachers being placed higher than those of the district, our CEA and the district were able to work out resolutions to such situations amicably. Generally speaking, these situations often involve many teachers. This situation involves just one, Mrs. Rubio. Currently, she is the only teacher affected. Tomorrow, my bimonthly meeting with Mr. Green, we plan on presenting the district with a formal memorandum of understanding attempting to correct this injustice. We urge the district to agree to the MOU and pay Mrs. Rubio the salary she would earn if she were hired today. With both a high school and a middle school reading teacher position currently open, can we afford to lose such a celebrated teacher over this? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon.[842.12][842.12](applause) The next speaker is Becky Cook.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Rendell, and the board, and Mr. Morrison, and Mr. Green. I am here for the CWA. My name is Becky Cook, and I am one of the vice presidents of our CWA Local 3180. I have, I'm passing out a packet, and you may be wondering what some of this is. You'll see a little envelope with 23 cents in it. That 23 cents is the average of the past three years for raises that support staff received. We got a total of 70 cents from the past three years, including this year, and it came up to 23 cents a year. I want to tell you that I know for a fact that McDonald's, Burger King, and Wendy's pays higher raises than that to their hard-working employees. If you look to see what the 31 cent that we got this year is, if you turn to the first page, it says, "What does 31 cents an hour mean to support staff employees?" And you'll see, for somebody working an eight-hour day, it's $2.48 a day. For somebody working two hours a day, it is only 62 cents, and that is your cafeteria monitors, and they have a tough job, let me tell you. If you look at the retro pay at the bottom, you'll see that the eight-hour employees for the retro for that 18 days, from September 6th to the end of, to the end of September, was $44.64 for an eight-hour employee. For a two-hour employee, it was $11.16. If you glance over to the next page, you'll see a memo that was sent to us stating that we were going to get our retro, not as a lump sum, but divided out between the next 17 pay periods. The 17 divided by the eight-hour employees, the $44.64, comes out to $2.62 a pay period extra. If you look at a two-hour employee, it is coming out to 65 cents extra a pay period. One of the, the majority of our support staff make less than $25,000 a year. I was looking at the health insurance plan, of which many had to drop down to a lower plan, and when you drop to a lower plan, you have a higher deductible. So many of them had to drop down to the lowest plan, and with a deductible of anywhere from $6,000 to $18,000. And if you look at the amount, the amount can range anywhere from $10,452 a year, down to $288 a year for a single person at the lowest plan. So that's taking a huge chunk out of most employees' paychecks if they make $25,000 or less.[1041.41][1041.41](beep) I know there was some discussion-
Just to see, the time is up. Thank you. The time is up.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next speaker-
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. The next speaker will be Vicki Seidels. Vicki Seidels.
I'm not used to speaking in public, so bear with me. Talk your ear off all day if I'm by myself. My name is Vicki Seidels. I'm the CWA secretary and treasurer, and I was on the negotiating team for the 31-cent raise. And there were some comments made by some of the board members that, quite frankly, upset me a bit. And I just want to, I want to address those. Mr. Frost stated that he was willing to vote for more money, would have been willing to vote for more money, in order to retain quality personnel. Ms. Simcik stated, "It must have been the will of the people since it was voted through." At a later meeting, Mrs. Zork apologized to the bargaining members because, like us, she too had been told that there was more money, there was no more money for raises. Yet during the same board meeting, they were voting to give other personnel a $1,200 raise. She felt she had been misled. No apology needed, Mrs. Zork. We relied to also. Not by Bruce Green. I would like to make that known. Bruce Green came into that way after the fact. Mr. Frost, you were empowered, along with all other board members sitting on this panel, to give us more than 31 cents an hour. The CWA board came before this panel, and we gave them passion pleas for financial assistance when bargaining was at 2.8%. The school board's offer at that time was a one-time offer for two years at $443.50 per person. For two years, that's $221.75 a person, no raise, just a one-time payout. 31 cents is most definitely not the will of the people. When we took the 31 cents, we took it because we felt that was the best we could get. We asked for a performance bonus to be reinstated. We were offered $200. When you break that down, that's a penny per hour for a 40-hour week. Is there a single person here that would be satisfied with a whopping 32 cents an hour? And that includes your performance? I highly doubt it. There never will be enough money in the budget unless you instruct Dr. Rendell to put money in the budget for raises. We're talking about the 700 employees that are the lowest paid on the rung. He has, you're voting tonight on number three, his, his goal, "High-quality workforce employees are the heart of our student's success, and we will attract, support, and retain high-quality workforce." Is that only administration, or are we included in that as well? Do you include us? I have almost 30 years' experience in purchasing. Does that include me? I save thousands of dollars every year for the district, and I do it willingly. I love my job.[1255.53][1255.53](beep) Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seidels.[1261.15][1261.15](applause) The next speaker is Mike Murray.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Rendell, executive staff. My name is Mike Murray, and I am CWA president of Local 3180. The superintendent and administration of the school district are not voted into office, but the board members are. And who votes? I would say the majority of the school district personnel, most of which were made up of union personnel. Dealing fairly and honestly with us in negotiations, we go a long way in the earning of our support. We want to do what is right. We have been open, honest, transparent in negotiations, and I think we have been more than fair. My creed has always been to tell the truth, and that is the best way of doing business. The board sits in front of a camera during meetings and tells the public that you have to be open, honest, and transparent. Yes, you should be. Maybe you should start with yourselves and employees. If you cannot sit down and negotiate and say what you're willing to do for your people, and then stay behind that when in front of the cameras, then we have a serious problem. First, the board has to tell the administration to put more money in the budget, to help us make an honest and fair living. It will not miraculously appear there, and the superintendent will not put the money in the budget without the board instructing him to do so. That has already been proven. Second, the school district's negotiating team should be open and honest with the CWA bargaining team, and the board members should do the same when sitting in front of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.[1368.61][1368.61](applause) The next item is the consent agenda. Need a motion?
Under the approval.
Any discussion? Very none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign. Next item will be the action A, approval of 2017-18 school advisory council membership composition. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, action item A and B are kind of tied together. Action item A is, we're seeking approval of the different school advisory council memberships. Each school has, by state statutes, is required to have a school advisory council and have certain membership. We're asking for approval of the membership rosters in action item A. Then action item B is the school improvement plans. Each school, traditional schools, are required to have a school improvement plan as part of state statute. So, with action item A, we're seeking approval of the various rosters of the school improvement plan, school advisory councils at each of the different schools. Mr. Green, anything to add?
Just that these are under two separate statutes. The school advisory councils, the Technical Center for Career and Adult Education, or adult education centers are required to have a SAC, but they aren't required to have a school improvement plan as they have a different, you know, articulation agreements. When you look at the Technical Center for Career and Adult Education in the back, you'll see a very large number that we've based their student population on, because we base it on the community in which they serve, which is all of Indian River County. When you look at the Alternative Center for Education, you'll see like 8,000 students. That's because they serve all of our secondary schools, so we base it on all the student enrollment. The rest of the schools are based on their individual school enrollments. Charter schools are exempt, so you won't see charter schools. Their board of directors serve in that role, or they may have a school advisory council if they so choose. And that's it, Dr. Rendell.
Thank you. Need a motion?
Bring the motion to approve.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? I have one question. The statutes indicate the composition of the teams, and there has to be a certain number of students and parents, and there's a ratio of racial thing. Are we in compliance with every one of those things in the statute, in every one of these school improvement teams?
Yes. Mr. Green and Mr. Taylor review each of the school advisory council membership rosters to make sure we have the desired number of different types of members.
So, to add to that, the requirement, the actual number requirements is that we must have a majority non-school district employee on the team. We absolutely verify for that, and that there are at least business community, student in high school, those different groups. The statute then says that they must be represented by the communities they serve. So that form that you see with all those statistics on it, that is our local. We have developed that. That is not in statute. We develop it to be transparent to the board and the community about how those teams are made up, but there aren't set numbers for those. We use the auditor general's findings and try to keep within 10% variances of the population, let's say of parents, African-American parents to African-American students, Hispanic parents to Hispanic students. But there aren't exact numbers for some of those, but everything that there is an exact number, we ensure compliance before putting on the agenda.
With all the years we've been doing this, have we ever been challenged on the makeup of any of the teams?
We have not, not that I'm aware of. We have been audited, and because we had those backup documents, we were able to show very clearly the representation.
Good answer. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
So it's my understanding that high schools are required to have students on their SAC, but middle schools are not. I remember we spoke about this last year, and I'd just like to continue to encourage middle schools to have students on their SAC. I think as we talk about culture and climate at our middle schools and different issues that arise, that the more ownership the students can have of their school and of the process of parents and community members and administration coming together, the better off the students will be. So, I'm happy to see that, I think one of our middle schools had some students on there, and I'd love to see more students.
Anything else? Have a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign. Next speaker. Next item is action item B, approval of 2017-18 school improvement plans and district improvement and assistance plan. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Action item B is related to action item A. These are the different school improvement plans that have been submitted. The blurb says, "In accordance with Florida statute 1001.42 and school board policy 2120, each school must complete a school improvement plan with the assistance of their school advisory council." It's not entirely accurate. Not every single one of our schools must submit a school improvement plan. So I'm going to ask Mr. Green to kind of explain that process to us. You do have a slate of school improvement plans we're asking to approve today, but not every school is on that list. Mr. Green.
Yes, thank you. So, when you go to the website, it does upload automatically all the schools within the district, because schools can choose whether to use the template. For example, charter schools are exempt from the school advisory council requirement, just as they are of the SAC. That's just in the section of law that the charter schools are exempt from. However, if a charter school were to get a D or an F, then they're required to submit a school improvement plan. That's required to be board-approved. As well, the Technical Center for Adult and Career Education you'll see is listed there, but they are not required to have a school advisory council, as they have a different committee to meet that need. So all the traditional public schools have plans, they have gone through the eight-step problem-solving process, and they have been approved by the school advisory council. That's the approving body prior to the school board, as per statute. However, Sebastian Charter Junior High School, in their contract renegotiation 2005, under the Educational Accountability Section, says that they will monitor their accountability through the school improvement plan. So therefore, technically, there is not a statute requiring Sebastian Junior Charter High School's school advisory or board of directors use that school improvement plan. It is their contract, and we have brought it forward as a matter of course. Dr. Martha McAdams was the first one who asked me to bring it forward with all the other plans, since they complete that plan and it is in their contract. The contract doesn't say, "And require board approval." However, we have always done that. And as well, Title I schools are required to have parent, there's a- And as well, Title I schools are required to have parent, there's a whole list of requirements, parent improvement plans, just a variety. And I, I know Ms. Malice is here and she could jump in and help me with all the different Title I requirements. And the way this school improvement template is crafted, if you complete the school improvement plan, then you meet those requirements. So we've always asked St. Peter's, instead of having all those other different plans, to complete the uniform template. And they always have and we've brought that forward as a matter of course. Unfortunately, St. Peter's Academy had some issues getting theirs and it still says submitted, so it's not available for review. So we'll be bringing St. Peter's Academy back at the next board meeting. So for this agenda, it is all the traditional public elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, and Sebastian Charter Junior High School, including the Alternative Center and Wabasso for approval.
Need a motion? Move approval. Any discussion? There are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Five, zero. Next item, approval of the Educational Facility Supplementary Plant Survey number five, version seven of the school district of Indian River County. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, action items C, D, and E are actually all related. Action item C is an update to the plant survey. This is necessary for us to move forward with action D and E. So in action item C, we are seeking approval for a supplemental survey. It's really covering the site that currently houses the Technical Center for Career and Adult Education down by the Freshman Learning Center and the site that currently houses the Alternative Center. Both of those locations needed some adjustments to the site survey, so those amendments are there as part of survey number five, version seven, for your approval tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion in a second. Discussion. I have a question. I guess maybe I just missed it or something, but are we including the adjustments that have to be made to the, what is now the, I guess, the Adult Education Center down by the Freshman Learning Center?
Yes, sir. That's the first page.
That's all included in this amendment.
The first, the first page on the backup is the one for the, that the address there is for. It doesn't cover all of the different renovations. That's, would be a building project that we would bring forward, it's just the changes to the site survey.
Okay. Any other questions? Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Five, zero. Okay. Item D, approval of award of RFQ number one zero two zero one eight to J.C. Construction Management Services for the construction of the Technical Education Center at the Summit Construction of Vero Beach. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In action item D, we are seeking approval of the award of the RFQ for the construction of the new Technical Center and Career and Adult Education facility at the site in Gifford. The total project budget is one million eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, which includes architect engineering fees, testing, commissioning, and construction costs. Mr. Teske or Mr. Morrison, anything to add?
No, sir, not at this time.
No, sir.
Move approval.
Ms. Justice.
Any discussion? Well, this is easy here tonight. Well, I'm not going to support the item because I just don't believe in the Construction Management Services Agreement, so, and we discussed that in the workshop, so just so everybody knows where I'm coming from. Yes, sir, Sean.
Yes, and I appreciate that and as I said in the workshop, but not everybody watches our workshops.
Okay.
I certainly understand your position, Ms. Cersei. And the only reason that I'm supporting this is because the only way to get these programs, my understanding is the only way to get these programs opening, opened and online and serving the community in August is to do it this way. Is that correct, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, but the CMAR contract was the only way we could meet the construction timelines to open in August.
Okay. And that's, that's my contingent.
That's what we've been told.
Fair enough. It's the only information.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to speak to, you know, what a wonderful project this and how it's going to be so great for our students. So I do understand your concerns, but I do think that the advantages to having this open and serving our students in August are going to, it's just going to offer some wonderful opportunities for a lot of our students to find some career pathways that they might not have had before. So again, this is truly coming from the voice of the community and very excited to support it.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I do want to say that I do, I agree with you on the construction management of how, how this bidding, or well, actually didn't go out for bidding, did it?
No, RFQ.
Right. So, you know, and we talked about this in the workshop, so I don't like being put up to a deadline to not be able to make a decision. And so I would like us in the future is to try to bring these forward sooner so that we're not put up against a deadline because it's not just the Technical Center. I think we've put up against deadlines with the Citrus Bowl and, and it just keeps going on down the line, so we don't really have good control of, of these projects because of that. So I just, whatever we can do to try to be ahead of this, that's, that's all I'm asking.
Mr. Cersei, I'd like to just say, I don't really feel that from my perspective as a board member that we aren't in control of these projects. This did go through the RFQ process, the construction, we'll get to that in a moment, that, or some of construction. I just, I, to say that we weren't in control or somehow we're, I feel that that's not a fair representation of, of that. I think we've moved quickly on this project because the need exists and we did, if you remember, the voters passed the millage, the point-five millage, and part of that is training. Some of those funds will be utilized as well as some of the Technical Center funding from the, and that's, it's escaping me now. Mr. Morrison, the funds that were accrued from the certifications for the Technical Center.
Don't workforce education.
Don't workforce education. Thank you very much. So, you know, while I understand that you might have concerns in some areas in this specific area, I think that, you know, we're doing what's best for students and I think that's the job at hand to offer the best education possible. So I personally don't have any concerns about that.
Well, that's what we're all about up here, is different opinions on the things.
Right.
We don't hard bid anything anymore, it seems like. And we, you can say we have, we have control of this project. Well, I'm not sure that we do. If we had a hard bid, we'd have control of it. That's my opinion so far. But anyway.
No, and it's, I highly respect the builder, so it's not, not that. And that's not where I'm saying that we don't have control of. We don't have control of, if we were to be able to have bids come in so that we could look at what was the best, I think that's the way that I would like to go. Not, hey, we have two million dollars to spend and then of course, you know, it's, we, we don't have an opportunity to try to get a better contract, is all I'm saying.
And to Ms. Justice's point, it's not the source of the funds that I'm concerned about. It's just the bidding process and making sure that we do get the best deal for the district. Get the same project, but get the best deal for it, so. And, and that's okay. It's okay if you have to disagree on things like this. Sean.
Actually, I'll yield to the ladies.
I just want to say that, and, and you're absolutely right, we do have control. And I do have to just say, and you're, everybody's in their opinion, there were three people here tonight that said, we don't want to do it this way, we would say no. And that would be that. It's just that it, you know, sometimes you're on the upside of a vote or the downside of the vote, but there's three people that are comfortable enough with this or feel that getting it open in time, not that the process is a better process, but we're out, as you said, outweighing the, what we, someone feels is the good in this case. I do have to make the correction though about the Citrus Bowl because the Citrus Bowl, Mrs. Ork, you weren't on the board. That was a architectural nightmare because there was a safety issue and we were shut down. That was not, we didn't have enough time. That snowball effect came to, hey, out of our control, somebody shut those stands down and that was that. And that's, that suspended high school graduations and all sorts of things. And that was a, something that it's, you know, it's like if you have a pipe break in your house, that wasn't a, I think we'll do the Citrus Bowl. So I do want to, because you weren't on the board then and we did a lot of hard work on that, the three of us, and so I, maybe it was just something that came to your mind, but I don't, I think that example was not correct, so I just wanted to clarify that because that was a shutdown and everybody did the best they could. But there are other things and you're absolutely right. And I think we've cautioned the superintendent and I think he knows that, and, and during the workshop, we could have said, you know, that's, we prefer that way. And that is a preferable way. I agree with both of you. But I do also know that in our CAFSA, if I'm right, Mr. Morrison, in our CAFSA, we were criticized twice, or I know at least one year, for holding on, twice, thank you, holding on to those funds. Those funds should have been spent and I don't know if it was waiting for the right idea because when those funds came along, there was, we started to go down one road to increase a culinary school. Again, that, you two weren't on the board then, but we were testing culinary food and schools and programs and how to enrich the adult ed in that, you know, in that respect. That didn't, we just saw a different path. So to expedite it, I will have to agree with my peers tonight and to get that going. But I can understand both, and I think, Mr. Frost, that we understand both your points too. It's just a call we're willing to make, but, you know, we have cautioned the superintendent to, to make sure, and I think he hears that. It was just, I think that the Adult Center for Education came upon this project, you know, it was brainstormed in a, in a timeframe that would not allow it. So this, to me, I feel is the only way we can get this, you know, I mean, it's not the only way. No, it's not. We could vote it down tonight, but I'm saying it's the only way that I feel to get it going. So I appreciate your point of view.
Well, I just, I just want to, this is only phase one. So the more we save in phase one is more money that we could put over into phase two. So I do understand that we have the money set aside that we're supposed to spend for the tech center, but I just, like I said, going forward, I don't want to be put up against a deadline to where, yes, I want it to be open in two thousand and eighteen, but what could we've done, you know, looking back, that could have got us to, to move this along quicker so that we, we didn't have a decision? If we want to, if we, let me take that back. If we want to open in two thousand and eighteen, we were, we have to make a decision here. So yes, I want to open up in two thousand and eighteen. So I feel like I'm forced into making this decision to go with, with a way to accept this contract that I don't feel comfortable in accepting, but I'm going to do it because I do want it open in two thousand and eighteen.
Ms. Frost.
Thank you. I, I agree, Ms. Cersei, and you know I respect your, your fiscal hawkishness, if you will, and a need to, to make sure that systems are in control. And I, I also struggle with the CMAR method. And I don't know that I'll, I'll vote for anything that comes before this board as a CMAR, again, to be honest. But I will support this for a number of reasons. One, the public spoke out to it and it kind of has a little bit of a hard attachment for me in this moment and, and one of its champions. So, and I know that it's going to be great for the community. And for that, for that reason alone, you know, I completely respect your vote, but I will be supporting this.
Anybody else?
That's everything.
I do have a comment on, on part two. You know, I would love it to be so successful that there is a phase two, but we had discussed also, you know, we have to see, we're dipping our toe in this to see, but I feel, I strongly feel that if phase one is a success next year, there'll be more time to plan. You know, they could act at status quo, but right now it's, you know, as I said, so I agree with the, you know, a more planned method on phase two to include a hard bid.
You know, it almost sounds like we're doing this project because we had that money we had to spend. That's been brought up here tonight and I understand that. We've been criticized in the audience, on the audits about having that money that we got that we just didn't spend. And I understand that that's, it almost, it almost looks like, let's do it so we can spend this money quick.
I'd like to speak to that if I can.
What did they say we had to do today? Raise your hand.
I'm raising my pencil now. Thank you. I'd like to speak to that. I apologize if that's what you thought I meant by bringing up those, bringing up the funding source for the project because that wasn't the case at all. I just merely wanted to explain that those funds are available and for that specific purpose. I think that the point of this is that we have students who may not choose to go on to college, that may not be where their skill set lies. And we want to give all of our students, every student, the opportunity to be successful and unfold the potential of every student. So like we saw with the Wabasso School and Kathy Perandosi tonight, they've done some things to unfold the full potential of every student at their school. We are now doing that for other students in our district. So I see this as an incredible opportunity to serve every and all student, and I just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay, pretty good. Well, the project is good, it's just the way we're going about doing the construction, so to make that a little clearer. Any, any other discussion? I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Nay. Next item is approval of the Construction Management at Risk Contract with Summit Construction of Vero Beach LLC for the Technical Education Center project. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In action item E, we are seeking approval of the contract between the School Board of Indian River County and Summit Construction of Vero Beach for the Technical Education Center project. This project will consist of the construction of a new four thousand plus or minus square foot, single-story vocational classroom lab building, as well as renovations to existing classrooms for the conversion of the existing Gifford Alternative School Campus to a Technical Center for Career and Adult Education facility. We're seeking your approval of the contract tonight.
Need a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Ms. Justice?
Yes, sir.
Have a motion in a second? Any discussion? There are none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Ms. Ork, I couldn't hear you.
I said aye.
Oh, you said aye, okay. And nay for me. Okay. All right. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have several things I want to cover. The first, I do want to thank the board for their support of the Technical Center for Career and Adult Education relocation to the Gifford Campus to convert that campus to a Technical Center. I think this is a huge thing for our community. It is something that we actually came up with in response to the community feedback. Dr. Arnett chairs a Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee that has a lot of community members on that. And one of the reasons we have that committee is to see what kinds of job needs there are in our community and what can we do to help fulfill those job needs. Are there things that we can do with our students to prepare them before they graduate from our schools that could put them to work immediately in the workforce? And that's not just graduating from our high schools, but also graduating from our Technical Center for Career and Adult Education. A lot of people forget that we have an adult ed component to our school district. So the Technical Center is going to allow us to do that. We're going to be able to put our citizens to work right away with highly skilled labor positions. They're going to make a difference right here in our community. And it was something that kind of grew out of a need that was identified through these meetings with our community members. And so I'm just excited that that project's moving forward. Can't wait to cut the ribbon in August, so it has to open in August. All right, so we've got to make that happen.
Heather.
It will.
No question.
The other thing is just last Wednesday, I think it was, we had Dr. John Hodge here. We've talked about him in some workshops and, you know, the board's aware of his work. He's an educator that works with school districts all across the country. He works with a company and they work with schools at school districts all across the country to improve student achievement, primarily for minority students, but for all students in general. And so we had him speak to all of our teachers last Wednesday to make sure they understood why he was going to be visiting their campuses this week, he and his team, to make sure they understand what the mission was about. It was a great presentation that he delivered to our teachers. We received a lot of positive feedback from teachers there in the audience that day. And also I've received numerous emails from teachers that were very thankful that they went to something that they found valuable. Sometimes when we bring them out of the classroom for a training or a speaker, they sometimes don't, we don't- don't, we don't necessarily get those kind of positive remarks from, from that, but we did. And Dr. Hodge and his team are in all of our schools this week. What they do is they kind of take a look at what we're doing, and then they meet with us and talk about what they identified as strengths, and so there's things that we want to continue to do, but then also they identify some areas of opportunity for us to do some things better. And they've worked with school districts all around the country and have all kinds of background knowledge and skills and techniques that they can help us improve in the areas of opportunity. So we'll be hearing more from Dr. Hodge and his crew throughout the year. Now, the last thing is, before the meeting today, we heard from Dr. Boujol, and she's a local figure here in our community. She founded, I think, and recently gave up the reins of the Gifford Youth Orchestra. Gifford Youth Orchestra is a volunteer organization that trains some of the youth in the Gifford Community on orchestra instruments, trains them on how to play and perform in orchestra, and they're having a concert Saturday, November 4th at 2:00 in the afternoon at the Gifford Community Center. And it's free, so if you're looking for some free orchestra music, you can get it at the Gifford Community Center, November 4th at 2:00 in the afternoon. One of the things that, when you train these students to perform with these instruments, they need to be able to perform with a live audience and that kind of thing. So the more opportunities they get to perform in front of a live audience, the better they will be at their craft. So if you have an opportunity to join us Saturday, November 4th, 2:00 at the Gifford Youth, at the Gifford Community Center, you will be in for a treat. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's it.
Okay. The next item will be in discussion. Mrs. Ork.
Okay. We actually, Dr. Rendell has put together a draft of our legislative priorities for you to take a look at. And this is basically what we had discussed at our last meeting. I think.
There's two pages.
Well, if you look.
It's two pages right now.
Right now.
One pager is two pages.
Because what we did is we kept on here, since it is the draft, what we had last year, and it's crossed through. So I think Dr. Rendell had a question he wanted to ask the board about the letter that we had discussed.
Two separate things. I went back and reviewed the tape of our last school board meeting, and during the discussion, we talked about issuing a letter to either the commissioner or the governor in support of switching from standardized test, state standardized test at the high school level to a national test such as the ACT or the SAT. And I was drafting the letter the other day, but I went back and watched the tape several times, and I didn't get a clear consensus whether I'm writing the letter to the governor or to the commissioner. Also, I wanted to share with the board, when we talked a little bit about the report, the Commissioner of Education was required by HB 7069 to commission a study or a report to determine if the SAT or the ACT has comparable measures for the Florida standards. You know, could it be something that actually measures the Florida standards? And we talked about that report being due in March. That report is actually due January 1st. It's supposed to be due before the opening of the legislative session, and in our mind, we were thinking legislative session in March, but this year, legislative session is in January. So the report is actually due to the governor and to the legislature by January 1st, 2018, so they have it ready for session, which I believe opens January 9th. So it is timely for us to draft and send this letter. I just need to know if I'm sending it to the commissioner, the governor, or both.
True project, Lauren, what do you think?
I think, my personal opinion is that we should send it to both, because the governor directs the commissioner, and I think by him having that letter, he can direct to her before she even drafts what she's going to say.
That certainly makes sense. Do you want to add Chair Johnson to, or State Board of Education?
State Board of Education.
So you've got the whole executive branch covered?
State Board of Education.
Good point.
Yes, sounds good.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Don't want to add anybody else to that. About our two legislative, our senator and our representative, do we need to?
They would have influence. This will be on the legislative agenda that we share with them.
Right.
This is the first point on the legislative agenda still, so.
Is it clear now?
Yes, sir, I have clear direction.
Good deal. Very good. That was easy. Okay, Lauren, go ahead.
Okay, so we looked at striking the paper pencil, what we had last time, so you'll see the cross through there.
We don't think we can get that. There's no appetite for it, Sean, in Tallahassee?
I don't believe we were unanimous on that matter, Mr. Chair.
Can I just, because Sean wasn't here, there was, because it was alternating, and I just want to say, because it was conflicting, because it, if I remember right, because if St. Lucy had pencil and we had computer, then, and we got better scores, then they would say that that's not fair, and there was, so that was the conflict of the issue, you know, to have either or. So it just seems like a moot point, because we're chasing our tail on that one.
Right. You, it's going to be an either or situation, and that's what, that's the way it was explained to me last session, and that's why we ended up with that, according to Chair Bellicka. So, I mean, we, this is what we have, and there's also, unless the constitution has changed, which it's opening up, but not before the end of this session, there is the word "uniform system of schools," and that word "uniform" has been, and of course, we have one counsel down here who can explain it better than I, but the thinking is that if you have one county assessing and then tying performance pay and district grades and things one way, and another, a different way, then that's not very uniform. So the only option that may be, there would be an expansion of paper pencil testing to include upper grades. However, I don't believe this board was unanimous with that, and my preference is that we have a legislative platform that the entire board can support. However, I'm one-fifth, you could literally vote me down on my desire to be unanimous, so should that be the preference.
But, Mr. Frost. Now, every year, the Department of Education comes out with a district that happens to be a sample district. And I'm wondering if we could get a, if we could be a special district and get the paper and pencil testing, so that we could make that comparison between us and St. Lucy, because I would love to beat St. Lucy, by the way. But, you know, at some point, if you always do what you've always done, you'll always get what you always got. Remember that one. I don't know if it's worth it, but we've got it, it's all struck out here, so maybe we need to move to the next one. Okay, go ahead, Lauren.
I mean, well, the first thing that we have to agree on is, and we talked about this elevator, you know, to the, to the office platform, the more we have, the less you have someone's ear. So I think we should just get to the end and figure out what the top four are. I mean, if you can circle back, but I just don't feel that that's going to be anything that we're going to get any traction on.
That's fine, that's why we're talking. Ms. Justice.
Are we going to continue to go through them?
Anything else on that, that I, the paper and pencil? Okay, Lauren.
Okay.
I mean, I'm assuming you've finished.
And you might get this without even having it on your platform. Just saying. You think so? That could happen, you never know. Things happen.
So we decided to keep on from last year, the level funding, so that remains. We decided to keep on the class size amendment flexibility. After reading, reading through, I feel it's probably best that we strike the best and brightest teacher scholarship or statement on that, for obvious reasons, with the district.
We've decided to move that, right?
Right. Mm-hmm.
You okay with that?
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I would expect there's going to be something happening, the best and brightest this session, but it's not necessary to have it on our agenda.
Right.
Again, we only have three minutes.
Well, we basically, if you look to the second page, teacher recruitment and retention. So this is another way of maybe wording what we're trying to get out, get at without saying the best and brightest, the statement that we have here. So if you'd like to, Dr. Rendell actually gave this wording to me before I got here.
Yes, watching the tape from last time, it was, you know, and looking at our platform from last year, the funds that were directed towards best and brightest, we were saying that possibly those funds could be directed at teacher recruitment and retention in a different way. So I tried to craft a statement that would say, funds that could be directed towards teacher recruitment and retention, it would be best if local districts could decide how to use those funds, rather than use the state formula, best and brightest, or whatever. So that's kind of what that's about. It just, a few sentences, it basically says, if there are funds that are supposed to be directed towards recruitment and retention, I believe that's the purpose of best and brightest, you know, to get the best into the teaching workforce as possible. If we're going to have funds directed at recruitment and retention, could they be given, could districts be given the flexibility to apply those as they see fit to either high need schools, high, areas of high need, you know, subject areas or certifications of high need, that kind of thing?
Yeah, I'd ask that we could possibly take that one step further, and one of the things that we've identified to be in need, not only in our district, but across the state and the country, is minority teachers. Could we ask the legislature to, and the State Board of Education, to consider putting, making minority teachers as part of the critical teacher short, need? I know that English is a second language, there's mathematics, there's science, but that's one area that we definitely could use some help recruiting and possibly get some funding towards that more specifically, if it was added to that list.
Any appetite for that? Okay, Lauren.
I'm not, I would think that this here, the funding directed at recruitment and retention, given the district's local flexibility, would, we would be able to do that. I don't know if every district is having the same recruitment issues that we are, so by just putting that in there, we might alienate a few other districts from helping to support us on this. But no, I don't, I just, I totally agree that that's something that this money right here could be used for, if we could get this.
Right, I just don't, perhaps it's, perhaps it's a separate item then. I just, when I look at the critical teacher shortage areas, there's English, mathematics, science, exceptional student education, English speakers of other languages, reading, and minority teachers, it's something that districts around the country are struggling to recruit. And if, perhaps if we made it more attractive to become a teacher, more people would go into the profession, just a thought to have that added.
Ross.
Thank you. And I actually see both sides of this. Certainly, we want to be able to recruit teachers, minority teachers, and there actually, there were dedicated funds for specifically African-American male teachers in the last budget, I believe. Now, I also see Mrs. Zork's point that, that's the beauty of local control, right? We're always saying, we don't want the legislature to tell us how to spend our money. I would prefer that they're not able to tell us not to spend it that way, so that by having the local flexibility, I think this is, I think this is a good bill that allows us to do the right, or, I'm sorry, this is a good proposal, allows us to do the right thing. And certainly, that is, that is a high priority for me as well, Mrs. Justice, and I certainly am committed to, once we get these funds.
Using them.
Using them in that fashion.
Okay. And then, the new one we added was, is the shelter operations and reimbursement. If Dr. Rendell wants to explain.
Thank you, Ms. Zork, yes, that was definitely a direction, directive that I was given by the board at the last board meetings, to craft some language about asking the legislature to put out some uniform policies regarding shelter operations and reimbursement. One of the things, when we prepared for hurricane season this year, we knew that the Red Cross was not going to be able to manage all of the shelters and that kind of thing, so we started, as we prepared for that, Mr. Teske, Mr. Morrison, the rest of the cabinet, we looked around the state to see what everybody else was doing, and in some districts, you know, there's Red Cross supported shelters, in some districts, there's no Red Cross supported shelters. Flagler County, for example, they operate the shelters on their own, they have been for several years. So, but, you know, we talked to other districts, and the Red Cross still supports in some ways and some capacities. Here at our special needs shelter, the Health Department helps us operate that. So looking around at the different models in the state, we said, well, it would be nice, you know, it's in-state statute that we have to make our schools available as shelters, but that's all it says. You have to make them available as shelters, doesn't say who runs the shelter and that kind of thing, so we asked the legislature maybe go a step further on the statute, even though we keep asking for local control. That might be something where we would like a little uniformity. And then the other thing is the reimbursement. As we went through our experience with Hurricane Irma, and then to try to, you know, recoup those costs, in our current arrangement with the county, we're on our own to seek remittance of those funds from FEMA, unfortunately. But there are several counties to the south of us, large counties like Palm Beach County, the school district is remitted, reimbursed from the county, and then the county seeks reimbursement from FEMA. So again, if it's the board's pleasure to have this as part of the legislative agenda, is guidance or policy from the state as well. You're going to tell us we have to open our buildings as shelters, tell us who's going to operate them, and then who's going to seek reimbursement from FEMA. That's kind of what I tried to put together there.
And time's certain when we'll receive remuneration.
I didn't put that in there.
That would be good language to add. Speaking of which, I think I've seen other superintendents talking about this in committees, so I know that this is, this is in the zeitgeist right now.
Yep.
Do you have draft language in a bill sponsors and all those other wonderful things we have to do to make this happen?
I haven't talked to Joy Frank or anybody else from FADS about whether they've drafted anything. I know that several of us are talking about it. I've actually asked FADS to do a survey, it should be out this week, of all the superintendents, so we'll know, of all that respond, we'll know who operates their shelters and how, and how they go about seeking reimbursement. So then we can have some data that says, you know, out of 67, 30 do it this way, 20 do it this way, and so on.
Well, and I'm no way going to craft the language, but some of my thoughts would be, because the statute, because a state of emergency may only be declared for a certain county and everything, that that state statute should be declared, you know, there should be something within the statute that describes, "The emergency management funds shall reimburse all school districts upon state of emergency, any funds do." Coming right after the sentence that says they have to maintain the thing, some, that, I mean, something has to be tied to the state of emergency, and therefore, that would tie it to state funds, and that would tie it to maybe emergency services, and they can certainly budget for that. It may never be used, but that would be somewhere where my thought would go.
Clear. Are we, we're all in agreement on this one?
We discussed this at the workshop, ma'am? Thank you. We discussed this at the workshop, and I'm comfortable with the language, and I support it being on the legislative platform.
Right. So the last one's transportation funding. The current amount of funding allocated to transportation expenses is inadequate. We're asking the legislature to adequately fund student transportation. Is this something that we feel that we want to be our fifth? Or, I was talking with Martin County, and they just have a blanket statement that said it's going to come out as unfunded mandates. So do we want to specifically say transportation funding, or do we want to just really hammer the share about all the unfunded mandates that we have?
There's like 27 of them. Thank you. There's like 27 of them. They're not going to, you do that, and they're just going to go, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So I don't, I just, right, I don't, I don't think that's, I think it's wasted verbiage, because there's, I mean, I could even be wrong on the 27, we might be up to 32 right now. But when I came on the board, there was 27, if I remember right, so we might be up to like 32 right now. But, so I just don't think, I think if we did that, it's just such a waste of energy, if we went unspecific.
I agree that we should be specific about it. I'd like to take it one step further and say that when we're speaking with our local legislators, Erin Graul and Debbie Mayfield, that we make sure we tell this story properly, including with the advanced funding, the TAN, exactly how much that cost us and why we had to do it, as well as the transportation funding. It's my understanding, if I remember correctly, we were underfunded by about $1.5 million. So I really think that adding in some points to So, I, I really think that adding in some points to that, I, I don't, I, to be a little bit more specific, because I, I truly believe that once you tell that story properly, it's much harder to look away from it. We are not the only district in the state that's underfunded in transportation specifically, so perhaps we can all get behind that together.
How can we get the specifics on that, though? I mean, we know we were a million and a half dollars short or whatever. How can we, how can we tell the legislature exactly what we're going to need?
Well, I think that, I think that the idea would be, how much did we spend, how much were we funded on transportation, how much did we spend? And we asked for the difference. In other words, we'd say, you're underfunding us by forty percent or twenty percent. So increase transportation funding by twenty percent.
Should be on a per student basis, can we get it down that low? Because I mean, I don't know if they can add that in.
We can divide it however we want. I mean, it is earned on a rider basis. And what I suggest, what we'll, what we'll do is we'll go back and look at maybe a five-year trend. So we're not just saying last year we were underfunded by fourteen million or one point four million. We'll, we'll do a five-year trend to see, you know, what percent we're looking at.
I think it's a good one to go on.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I ask a question of Mr. Morrison, Mr. Superintendent? Based, based on the budget conference hearings that, that are happening, does this seem like a good year to be going after additional revenues?
From the information that I've been seeing, prior to Hurricane Irma, the state was facing probably a hundred million dollar surplus with projected budget cuts in nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one, prior to Irma. Dr. Baker talked about the fact that the restoration efforts would, you know, when you go to Home Depot and you purchase plywood or whatever to the, to the recovery effort, that would stimulate some economic activity, but in, in the long run, it would not be sufficient to generate that statewide surplus as we see the, the revenues tend to shrink in the out years. That, that's the information I have, it may be different at this point.
I, I did catch a press availability with Chair Trujillo from the House Appropriations, and he suggested we take a year off from PICO funds. So, they're not going to fund buildings, maybe they'll fund buses. But, again, I, I am all for putting something in front of them just to keep it in front of them and to stay on, on top of mind. But I would temper expectations around the current financial climate.
Well, I do remember that, I think it was the House that wasn't going to give us anything, hardly pennies. And then Governor Scott said, no, we're coming back to special session, and we got record-breaking funding. I think this, with this being his last year, I think it's a good year that we can still ask for education funding. Because, you know, rumors are, and this is just, we all know, that the governor's looking at running for US Senate. So I think it's a good year to put it on the, put the funding on here.
I don't disagree. He did just propose one point seven billion dollars in environmental funds, though. So, if he's moving to, never mind. But the environment is very important to the governor this year. So I don't, I, I don't have any insight, and perhaps you do. I know that you have much better relationships with the, with the governor's office, so hopefully you, you have some good insight that we can get those funds.
I just really feel that we should just leave the ones that we left on there, on there. But hopefully our letter will be heard for the ACT or, you know, accepting those. And then I really think we should lead or be strong with the reimbursement for the hurricane funds. That specifically has been detrimental to our funding, you know, here locally. And then if we got one passed, that would be the best one, and I think it would be very helpful to other counties, too. But I mean, I think that it should be on the paper, but, you know, it's sort of like, you know, you have a few, but all right, I'll just take this one, you know?
Do we want them in the order of, of our preference?
Absolutely. You should absolutely have your most important thing right here at the top.
Thank you. Dr. Rendell, where does the funding come, the one point five, when we have to make up that money, where does that come from?
Transportation, the shortfall in transportation.
Yes.
Would be the general fund.
Okay, and what other things could we utilize, one point five million dollars for general fund money unrestricted? What could we use those things for?
To increase wages and compensation.
Okay, so we could give raises with that money, one point five million dollars. It's a lot of money that they don't tell us what to do with, that they're forcing us to use.
For transportation.
For transportation. I still think it belongs on the legislative platform, it's one point five million dollars that we could give in raises.
Yeah, I think it should be on there.
No, no.
Absolutely.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, I feel strongly. We agree.
I agree. I, I also agree with Mrs. Simcheck that shelter operations and reimbursement is, is something we can certainly lead with, because I think that is simply the most defensible ask. I, I think it's, it's completely reasonable that since the districts are expected to provide a service, that we have some sort of structure around that and remuneration.
And we have half a statute.
Right, exactly, yeah, that's, that's the problem.
How much do we spend this year on the shelters? I think you've got that number off the top of your head.
Not off the top of my head, but we did, we did submit a memo that had that.
So we have approximately one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and forty-three cents in labor costs to man the shelter, which would have been eligible for reimbursement from the Red Cross prior to the situation that we have now.
But the total cost that we're at.
The total cost right now, cash out the door, when, when the tally still continues, according to my memorandum that was sent to the board, was five hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And we have, at the time, approximately two hundred and thirty-six thousand in purchase orders that are still outstanding, invoices that needed to be paid, that sort of thing. So we're up in the seven hundred thousand dollar region.
Okay, so.
So that's number one.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Rendell.
So, what I would like to see in, for discussion here now is shelter operations, number one. I feel like class size amendment flexibility is going to be a huge issue this year, so I, I would like to put that at number two. And number three, teacher recruitment and retention.
Oh, no.
What about?
Level funding.
Level funding.
Transportation, number four, and then level funding, number five.
You, you got me up to number three.
Okay.
Do you want them to see it, or do you want them to pass a bill?
We want the money.
Well, I'm, the way I put it in priority is what I know we are going to get some movement on. I know that we're going to get movement on the, the, the shelter operations reimbursement. I know we're going to get movement on that. There's a lot of talk right now about class size amendment, because we have a lot of students coming into Florida from Puerto Rico. So districts are asking for that flexibility now. I know that, that's a hot topic that they're going to be working on. What was number three, teacher recruitment and retention? Reason I, I think that should be number three is I still think the best and brightest is going to be a hot issue with legislators this session. But this is our replacement term, terminology that we want to use for that. Four, transportation. Five is, is going to be the most difficult that we have.
Mr. Cersei.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm new here, so I'm going to ask, if, there's so much movement from other districts regarding the hurricane reimbursement, is it necessary that that's number one for us? It seems like it's going to have support from around the state. So perhaps we'd like to leave with something else that we feel affects us more directly in our classrooms. As far as teacher retention or.
Right.
Advanced funding, if, you know, if we're going to come up to the possibility of possibly having to issue a TAN? We've discussed what the ramifications of not doing that might be.
Well, if I can, I believe, and I could be wrong on the price, but I think it was a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars of interest? And when you talk for, for the TANS, or was it twenty-two thousand? Excuse me, versus, I'm sorry, versus five hundred and thirty-four thousand, you have to go where the pocket book.
Well, then we should do transportation, it's one point five million.
Yeah, but there's been, hurricanes didn't affect transportation, but if we don't help support other areas, other counties that are also going to support this, it'll never move. If you have, I mean, that's just what I'm saying.
That was the question I asked, you know, is it?
And I also, just not to, but I think we should start with, like, what do we agree is number one? Because we all go, you know, and then what do we agree is number two, or we'll be here for a very long time playing.
Okay.
So, I mean, and, and so I, I think the shelter should be, but if you, you know, I mean, I was just asking if.
And we can't vote, but all in favor, the, the, the shelter being one, I'm, I'm seeing some nods. I think we're all in agreement on that, that's one, okay. What about two? Class size amendment flexibility, that's down for two. Do I hear a three or a four on that? It's two. Number three, we have the funding directed to recruitment and retention. That's listed as three. Any interest on having that on the, the transportation or?
I, I, I would be comfortable with transportation funding being number three. Just because. We're grownups here.
I don't, transportation funding is hitting us pretty hard.
That was my justification, Mrs. Justice mentioning the one point five million and Mrs. Simcheck's path, or, or her rubric being about the, the way it hits our, our pocket, makes a lot of sense, so, for that purpose, I'm.
I'm seeing some, looks like that's going to be number three, Laura.
Okay.
Then, number four.
Number three.
Back to the recruitment and retention.
Well, the alternate assessment, that's still on there, correct? Should that be number three? I mean, I don't, I, I'm not partic, the transportation doesn't have to be number three or number, I mean, I, I think it is a big issue, but, I mean, it needs to be student-focused, and I know that's a big issue for us. So I just want it on the list, I really, as far as the priority, you know, should the alternate assessment be higher than that?
Okay. We have one and two, we have one and two and three, and what we're looking for now is funding directed recruitment and retention. Alternative assessment's going to be on the agenda, and then restore advanced funding for the F E F P. Those are the two that I need to have for number four. Hearing nine, that goes in, restore advanced funding, number four.
Wait, hold on. Level funding for number four? I, I'm telling you, that's, that. So are you putting in number four?
I, I'm just, I gotta have some input.
I prefer teacher recruitment and retention, the funding for that, flexibility to go number four.
Okay. Okay, anybody not liking that, then five would go to level funding. And then we'll have alternative assessment on the list, it just will be down the, down the list.
So it went from one last year to.
Well, we're writing a letter specifically.
Because we got to study. We're moving the ball. It is moving downfield.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I make a suggestion?
No. Getting late.
Next item.
Now, now, just, this is for the legislature, I just want to say this, that, because I've been to Tallahassee and I brought home money for Sebastian, and I've had those elevator to the office conversations, and I was successful. So I just wanted to impart that if we do the summary, as we did, as we laid it out, and then I was hoping that Dr. Rendell can provide a one-page only, it has to be that brief, and under the shelter issue, have our expenditures there and what we were out. And under the TANS, you know, so each one, and under the transportation, how it impacted us individually. So that Laura has those backup sheets. She'll have the summary, and maybe somebody will go to the next pages, but most likely they won't. But if they do, they'll be able to see the actual overall impact that each one of, how, how it affected us. With a color graph on the money, and as I said, only one page for each subject, please have that attached to your summary. And tons of copies for when you go, so you can have those to pass out.
I agree. I, I had noticed, though, that the legislators want more information, they want more detail. Well, how much is this costing? Because I think it really helps them, whenever they support it, to be able to know, you know, how to specifically speak to that.
Well, and you may, when you, when you begin corralling them up, you may find that they have a special interest in transportation. So you pull out your, your transportation details. And then somebody else may like the, I'm going to teach a recruit, pull out your teacher recruitment, and what, what we need on that, so. A lot of sense, actually.
When will be, when, what time of year, what month would, did this conversation take place and these things be presented?
September. No, well, that's, that was a question I had for.
As a committee.
Well, absolutely, if you, listen, if, if, yeah, if, if you're not, if you're not in, in the game right now, then you're not playing. So I guess my question is, for, for Mrs. Zork, do we know if Representative Graul has any bill slots left? Before you approach her about anything? Because they, a lot of times they'll allocate certain bill slots, and there are only six of them in the House. So they need to, if they can't give you one of theirs, then they have to get them from another member, or sometimes reach across the aisle. One of the things I was thinking is Representative Shev Jones, Chevron Jones, Broward Democrat, just filed a bill on teacher pay, basically increasing, allocating some resources for the base pay increase. Maybe this is something that could be amended into that bill, assuming he has support of, of leadership for that bill. But I know he's, he's a, he's a well-respected man in Tallahassee, so that is possible. As we, as we think about these things, if, I mean, if you're serious about passing legislation, you have to start working on, and, and I'm sure you have been, so hopefully Representative Graul has a bill slot?
Well, I know it's hard to, to go to someone and ask them to, to save a slot for you, if you don't know what your platform is yet, to ask what you, you want from them. But once we have this, I will be meeting with other groups and organizations and other districts to see who we can get together and go after those representatives and senators to, to make sure that they, that we can draft a bill for these.
And what, when would that take place?
The drafting of the bill?
January?
Till June.
When they have to file a bill, when is that?
Session opens January ninth, it's usually around then. It's usually the first, usually the end of the first week. It needs to be in drafting. Soonish, you know, in the next few weeks. I know that there are, you know, bills are formed, it's already started. Mostly it's comeback bills at this point, as you know. But that's what we're seeing pass quickly through committees. But as for, I, I don't recall the exact dates, but it's usually around the first week of actual session that, that bill filing deadline is. I can, I don't have my phone, so.
We could probably have this in the next couple of days.
Right. And then our delegation meeting with Senator Mayfield and Erin, Erin Graul is November twenty-ninth.
Sounds correct.
And so I would ask that all the board members, if you'd like to come to that, and they normally host it at the commission chambers. And, and at that time, we'll present what our platform issues are. But I've been meeting with them, so they can, they're going to know ahead of time what our platform issues are.
And just, there was, Ms. Steve Resta was also after, I think her meeting is November fourth?
The third and fourth, yes.
And she is going to, all those school board attorneys. Only, but was going to bring us back some feedback on the shelter issues?
Yes, ma'am.
And what other counties are doing, so that will be helpful.
She can also promote what our issues are going to be at that meeting.
Yes, I was planning to.
Find out the temperature of the other.
To, to share this information with them as well.
Anything else on the agenda, I mean, on the legislative?
One item that was asked to be discussed or looked at was becoming a member of the Central Florida School Board Coalition. It seems like the, the area. Central Florida School Board Coalition. It seems like the, the areas that they're gonna be going after might be something that goes along with our, our agenda, is something really, they're looking at class-size waivers and class-size amendments. So, and based on what I'm seeing of the, the group, it seems like it would be a good group to become a member of this year, and just, um, not look at it, and have to go back to it every year to look at, is this a group that we would wanna be a part of. But, I believe the fees are a hundred dollars, so I do think it's a good suggestion. And, Dr. Rendell?
Yeah, we discussed, um, joining the Florida School Boards Coalition, I believe, last January, and we didn't have support to move forward then, but, um, they do meet once a month. I think it's the first or second Monday of the month. Usually, the superintendent and one board member go, and they meet in Orlando. It's Seminole, Orange, Osceola, Lake, Brevard, I believe, Felicia and Sumter might be the seven. Not sure if Felicia's in there or not. But, um, they do a lot of collaboration, sharing best practices and things like that, but they don't necessarily move lockstep, especially in legislative agendas and that kinda thing. So, they don't, we're not tied to supporting their legislative agenda, but we do, we would have the opportunity to share a lot of information with them, and, you know, we can put it on the list of memberships. The next board business meeting is the November meeting where we seat the chair and the vice chair, and we also set our schedule for the following year. But, the other thing we do is decide what committee appointments there are and all that kinda thing, so we can put that on the list if that's the direction of the board.
Any objection to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to, and I'll remind, because Mr. Frost wasn't there, and I wanted him to weigh in. One of the reasons we left the Florida School Board Association was because of their lawsuit. And this particular group, you know, we had left them as well. I have a very hard time because we are tied, you know, you say that we're not tied to them legislative, but I remember when we were with the Florida Association of, was it the small school board?
Greater Consortium of, no, the last, the last group.
Ms. Hamanas was on that.
He was on F S.
Small districts, I think.
The small school district council consortium.
Yes, and, and the problem with that, and I was very upset, was they were in favor, and they voted against that voucher system as well. So, what, regardless of what the vote was, it's very hard. I have trouble with, you know, and you can find this, when people start looking at, well, you were with that group, and they voted for, whether you're in, running for senate, or running for whatever, or sitting here, or running for what. I would hate to be, join and be a member of something, and then find that they're something that, vote for something that we're adamantly opposed. In general, though, to, to, and again, going back to, actually, Dr. Rendell was a product of the employment search for school board superintendent, and we paid a very low price, as opposed to going out to the market. And so, there was some benefits, but then when it came to the one issue, we broke away. So, usually, things like that will make you break, break away after the fact. So, I don't wanna say I'm opposed, if you feel that it's beneficial, but I just wanted to put the word of caution, because I'm not familiar with.
Okay.
How their legislative, you know, if it's just sharing information, that's great. If they actually have a legislative platform, if they've ever had one in the past, I wanna know about it before I vote. And, 'cause that's, then I would say, ah, but otherwise, any other reason, I would say, by all means, let's join for a hundred dollars.
Um, I was not able to get the 2017 legislative platform, but I was able to get the 2016 legislative platform, if you'd like to take a look at that.
So, we don't know what they'll have this year? So, whoever attends will vote.
Um, I do know one of their priorities is, based on some public speakings that they've had, it is gonna be the classroom size, and the hurricane is gonna be one of their issues. So, that's why I said, let's look at joining this year, but not automatically rejoin next year. Let's take it year-by-year basis to make sure that we're not apart, joining a legislative platform if it's not something that lines up with ours.
Could you join for just a year? Cut. You just don't send their money in.
Right.
Yeah.
What did we just say?
No, no, you.
Um, I see this is larger than just a legislative issue. This is one facet to the purpose of the group, I would imagine, and the intention. So, you know, the Florida School Board, sort of, Florida School Board Association is a group that some school board members belong to. The Florida Coalition of School Board Members is a group that some school board members belong to. None of us, or I, that I'm, Mr. Frost was the past president of the Florida Coalition of School Board Members. I, I think that, you know, we represent a, a large group of, of taxpayers, and 18,000 students, and I think that it's always good to know what's going around, on around the state, both from a legislative standpoint, but also in classrooms and in districts, and sharing those best practices. So, I'd just like to, to say that I think that there, there are benefits beyond just this one area.
Mr. Frost?
Thank you. And I think I can bring some comfort to Mrs. Simczek. A couple of years ago, there was a very, very good bill passed into law, 617.221 Florida statute, which allows school board members to individually choose the organization of, of their choosing, or none, or to, you know, you don't have to join, you know, the whole board can't make you join something. However, that does not apply to this particular type of group, because this has superintendents. So, speaking to the elected piece of it, if, if you're thinking of running for senate one day, you can easily say that, you know, I, I chose this group, I chose that group, I chose not to be part of this group because they were doing these things. However, this is more of a work group. My concern with this group, as I read this, is they got nothing. Of, of their, of their ask, they got nothing. So, they're, they aren't super effective, which is why some folks decided to leave that group and go do their own thing, because they have better relationships with the legislature and the governor. So, so, I mean, I, if, if our superintendent says that there's benefit in working together and sharing knowledge and best practices, I, I'm willing to, to pony up the $20, that's my share, to, to join. And if Mrs. Zork wants to, wants to attend, or our legislative liaison, or whomever, we decided our next organizational meeting wishes to attend these meetings, as part of their duties as a school board member here in Indian River County, I'm more than happy to do that. And hopefully, they can shape some of their policy and, and bring along some things that are, that are, that are our ideas, if you will, and maybe, you know, the folks in, in Brevard and those seven, six other counties will, will be open to that. I certainly share your concern about being, you know, affiliated with different organizations, and that's why I'm glad we have a law that permits.
Would you, would you have to be the legislative liaison to?
No, not necessarily. That, that's just kind of how it has been, but you, that's a, that's a point.
No, 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 no.
Be appointed to this committee.
Right. Fair enough.
But maybe what they're needing, Sean, is leadership. Of course, why don't we make our own?
Well, I.
Spend a hundred bucks, and they can all send money to us.
No, they, they have a president from Brevard County, Andy Ziegler, who's very well-respected. And, you know, maybe in the past, it's always about leadership. Is, Mr. Frost, you're looking at me?
No, I, I just, no. I, I, I agree, and I, I think that whomever this board sends will provide leadership.
Okay.
Laura, do you want to lead the one that goes there? We can't do that just yet, but.
But we can express interest. I know other boards do that.
Are your Mondays all free? Which Monday, you can go? And then a bigger question will be superintendent. Do you have a lot of free Mondays?
Monday is actually, usually a very busy day for me, so.
Right.
So, weigh that up, yeah.
Okay.
Well, okay. It's a hundred dollars. If I need to pay the hundred dollars.
Accepted.
Mr. Morrison can deduct it out of my.
Mr. Cersei, the interesting, the interesting thing about that is, we do have our organizational meeting on the 21st, and at that point, certain appointments may change.
Right.
So, you're assuming that perhaps things continue on this day.
At least tonight, we have somebody that's interested in going to that.
I'm also interested in going. I'm sorry. Was that not clear? I apologize. I brought it up at the last meeting we had.
Okay. I didn't know that. Well, we could have a bidding war. Were you paying, she's gonna pay the hundred dollars.
No, I'm not paying now.
I'm happy to pay the hundred dollars.
Can we straighten that from the record?
I, I think superintendent needs to put it on the list.
Right.
Of, of the various committees that we're gonna have. I mean, I, I think he puts that together, maybe Nancy does, of all the appointments that we need to make at the organizational meeting. I think it needs to be there, if there's that much interest in it.
Right.
Any objection to that?
No.
Okay, Mr. Superintendent, it needs to be on the list. Okay?
Understood.
What else?
I wanna make that clear.
Mark.
Mary.
Um, let's see, anything else, uh, under discussion? Sean?
Manatee's part of this? I'm just kidding. No, no, sir, no, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the, the opportunity.
Mr. Simczek?
No.
Ms. Justice?
No, Mr. Cersei. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, school board member matters. Ms. Justice?
Thank you very much, Mr. Cersei. I just wanna say thank you again to everyone that helped with the Day of Caring. It truly was a very special day, and we had a lot of fun. There was dancing and camaraderie, and it was lovely, so thank you. Congratulations to Vera Beach High School Golf and Volleyball, both district champions. I know that Vera Beach High School just, the golf team just went to the regionals, and they won, and will be going on to the state, so congratulations to them, and we wish them a lot of luck. Couple Fridays ago, I got to have breakfast over at Gifford Middle School. It was delicious. I had a ham and cheese biscuit and a chocolate milk. Mr. Teskey was there as well, and Mr. McCarty, and I believe it's Elaine Bregy, is that correct?
Yes.
That is the cafeteria manager. And it was really nice to see her interacting with her students that get breakfast every day, and just the level of love and concern for each student, and making sure that they were gonna have a good day was really awesome. So, thank you for that. It was a great experience. If you haven't had breakfast at one of our schools, you should come check it out. Really delicious. Had the opportunity on Saturday night to attend a function for the Jimmy Graves Foundation. Mr. Cersei and Mrs. Zork were there as well. Joe Graves, a, a local attorney in town, and his wife Carol lost their son last year, and as many people might remember, they have purchased the ballfields next to the high school, and they unveiled what their plan will be for that. And it is truly amazing. The, when they talk about Jimmy, and when Joe talks about Jimmy, he talks about reflecting light. That is certainly what they're doing, and it's going to be a wonderful, the plans for the facility are gonna be wonderful. There will be a regulation track that our students will be able to use. There will be a gym on the first floor that will be manned by a, a local company, but they'll also watch out for the facility. Mr. Matt Stott was there. He is the orchestra director and teaches at Gifford Middle School as well, and there will be a, a building there that he can use as a conservatory, so that students will have room to practice. So, again, just, you know, out of a horrible situation of a family losing their son, he'll be remembered in such a wonderful way, and we are, are excited to be a part of keeping his memory alive. Osceola Magnet was awesome. Thank you, Mr. Simpson, for inviting us out to your 25th anniversary. You have such a wonderful group of parents and students, and you represent them so well. It was a wonderful afternoon, and we loved seeing your River of Rocks, and all of the students were so proud. So, thank you again. It's been a great two weeks.
Ms. Simczek?
Thanks. I'll be brief. And thank you for mentioning, mentioning Vera Beach. They did win three, their athletic department won three prestigious awards, FHSS, as well as two others, and they were, um, best award for, if you know anything about sports, the different levels. They're a nine A's, uh, school district, uh, school, high school. And congratulations to Lenny Jankowski and all of the athletes who, who put them in that position. It was very exciting that they won that.
Mr. Frost?
I just wanted to thank Osceola Explorers for coming tonight and providing our music. And my, my daughter's whole singing career began under, under the tutelage of Mrs. Jones. So, it, it's great to see not only the math and the science and the, and the interplay with music, but to have them at our meetings to remind us why we do this. And without a yield, Mr. Chair.
Ready? Ms. Zork?
I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Simpson for inviting the board to come out to your school. It was amazing. Not only are you a school of science and math, you have a lot of little artists out there. Those, the rocks that they actually painted, I was very happily surprised. It, it, it was so, they were just so nice, because my kids do the rocks, and they look nothing like that. Trust me, it's not something that I wouldn't, well, I shouldn't say that. But, um, sorry, kids. But anyways, it was amazing. And not only are they math and science explorers, but the music we heard here tonight, and, and so, you guys are doing a great job over there, and we appreciate you here at the district. I know you don't always get the kudos, because you're always doing great things. And sometimes, we highlight the schools that we want to, to acknowledge that might not have as much accomplishments as, as you have. So, I do, um, think that you guys are doing a great job over there. It's been a really busy last couple of weeks, so I'm not even gonna dive into everything that has been going on. But, Dr. Hodge, whenever he spoke, he was amazing, and I just feel like we're so blessed as a district to have him coming into our schools and giving advice and advising us through this time. So, Dr. Hodges was amazing, and I really appreciate staff, Dr. Long, for finding him. He is definitely a gem. So, thank you to all our staff for all your hard work this week, and turn it over to you.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Superintendent's closing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to highlight one other musical extravaganza that took place this past weekend. Vera Beach High School did host its annual Crown Jewel Marching Band Festival. There were 13 high school bands competing, but there were also performances by Sebastian River High School marching Sharks. They did not compete, they were there for exhibition. Vera Beach High School's marching Indian band also performed in exhibition, but I think all of the musicians that were there were blown away by the University of South Florida Heard of Thunder marching band. So, it's a college band that took time out of their busy schedule to come and perform at the Crown Jewel Festival, and it's an all-day affair. Anybody who's been a band parent, that, parents, that kids have been involved in Crown Jewel know that it's an all-day affair, but quite a great experience for all the students and everybody else involved. And congrats to all the staff at Vera Beach High School for pulling that off again yet this year.
Anything else need to come forth this board? Hearing nine? Anything else need to come for this board? Hearing nine?